Mr. O'Neil, you want to begin with the one-page, the summary sheet that you started with there?
Uh, surely. The top page that you see before you is a summary of all of the 2018, both revenues and expenditures versus 2019. That was broken down by department as well as funds. As many of you know, Operational Services, probably more so than some of the other divisions, has several departments with multiple funding sources. And as such, I did want to ask Mr. Chair and members of council if you would prefer to handle all the 100 funds first?
Yes.
Or if you would like to go through them by department?
Go through the 100 funds first.
The 100 funds, okay.
Please.
All right, very good. So that first-page summary gives a snapshot, the forest through the tree, so to speak, of all of the departments within a division. And it is, again, as I mentioned, broken down by fund, which is indicated in the second column. Down at the bottom is a total count of our non-rep and rep positions in 2018 versus 2019.
Questions regarding that summary sheet? It looks like you're nonrepresented, you've added one position?
That's correct.
Proposed for 2019?
That's correct.
And it looks like in your represented positions, you've added three?
That is correct.
GIs positions those were?
Yes, in the represented, it was the GIS Director for our 911 Department. That was the representative position that was added. And under the non, I'm sorry, that was nonrepresented, my mistake. Under represented, the three positions were telecommunicator, also in 911 as well.
And I believe the majority of those positions, funding would be through?
Through the 260 state reimbursement account, that's correct.
Other questions on the summary sheet? Okay, let's go to planning and zoning.
Before we get started on our planning and zoning, I know many of you have probably met him, but I would like to just reintroduce our newly-appointed Executive Director in Planning and Zoning, Mr. Heath Eddy, who is going to be presenting the budget along with our interim director, who I would also like to take this opportunity to thank for several months of very dedicated and hard work as our interim director since about mid-July. I want to thank Dave Skronski.
Who's going to take the lead there?
Again, the summary, as we were requested, highlights all of the revenues and expenditures that reflected a change of 10% and $10,000 from 2018. And then we also have the breakdown of staffing levels by department as well at the bottom.
First, I'd like to say that I believe personally as the interim and working there in a few months, that the department is definitely strengthening. And I would say it's very strong today. So I'm very proud to, and thank everybody for having me fill in down there and helping things in order while we transition to a new director and staff up and make sure everything's running good. So, yeah, before you, you see the accounts have changed. I mean, I don't know if you want me to go over them line by line, but looking at the summary page, our subdivision of land development fees are, and this is reflective of the economy this year, at least for large development, our revenues are through the roof, which is a good thing. So we're going to adjust the budget next year conservatively for subdivision and land development fees in order to recognize some of that revenue that we're mostly seeing in commercial land development activity per our fee schedule. So I think that adjustment is a conservative number, but it's also a 15% increase in revenue. So zoning permits, you know, for the number of municipalities that we manage have been down, so we wanted to properly reflect that in the budget. It's been down for a couple of years, and, you know, there's a number of variables there. Zoning permits are typically residential, not, you know, a large commercial land development. So I don't know, I can't speak to why that is, but it's just, it's a reality situation. I think we should budget it appropriately. So there's been a dramatic drop there. The only note I would make is that if there are municipalities that we manage, that if you can talk to folks in those municipalities, that they can, they're the eyes and ears for the planning department. So if they see development within their municipality and they don't think that there's a permit, give us a call down in planning. We'll go out and make sure they got a permit, or at least they'll take the appropriate action to make sure the permits are flowing. A, it protects the constituents, but it also provides a proper revenue source in order to give that protection. Zoning applications, similar, it's down, so we want to represent that properly, not overinflate that in the revenue. So $10,000 was a reasonable number to attempt to hit next year. The next line item is Department of Agriculture. We do farmland preservation, as you may know. And for each farm that we preserve through the state farmland preservation program, there's certain costs associated with that. That is a pass-through, so our costs are paid for. We budgeted $10,000 this year. Next year, or the cost this year, we budgeted $10,000, but it turned out when we preserved a farm this year, the cost is $13,900. That was fully funded. So what we did was, we anticipate to do at least one preservation next year, so we wanted to match the cost, so it makes more sense in budgetary. We've already, Mr. O'Neil has already mentioned that under our PMA line item, we have a $75,000 grant, hazard mitigation grant. Again, there, of that $75,000, there is an anticipated 25% match that the county is supposed to do either in-kind or dollar or mix.
Correct.
So, you know, I don't know if you want to add to that?
And with that said, that was an oversight when we were preparing this. So I would like to offer a revision to that $75,000 figure because there is a match involved and required by the county. The actual funding that we should get in under that grant is $56,250, which is a 75% of the grant.
That'll be on our list of, as in every year, the Budget and Finance submits a list of proposed amendments to the budget as we proceed through these processes, and that'll be one of the amendments that Budget and Finance Administration submits to County Council for your review. We'll be removing that line item from $75,000 to $56,250, you said?
Correct, yeah. I just happened to mention that figure before, that's why, in case anybody may have noticed that, I wanted to mention it at this time.
And I would just like to reiterate, the importance of that program is, you know, it really goes without saying, but it's also important for the individual municipalities. If a particular municipality has a major event, if the county is not in compliance with this program and they're not on board as adopted, they could be ineligible for federal funds during a natural disaster. So we've got to set the bar. We reach out to every municipality as a part of this program. They need to adopt resolutions within their municipality in order to get on board. But if everybody's doing their job right, we're all protected, so it's a good thing. Any questions on revenues? Moving on to expenses, other contractual services, obviously there's a bump because we've added the hazard mitigation, and that will be also adjusted to match the, right? I would imagine we're going to have to make that adjustment there because the hazard mitigation project is also, well, actually, no. $75,000 may be what needs to be expended in that line item, it's just our match may have to be a part of that. That also, the makeup of that requested amount also is through our NPO for projects under Luzerne County Transportation Authority and Northeast PA Alliance. These are mostly passed, these are pass-through, so they will be reimbursed. Those are the only line items that make up that contractual services at this time. Engineering and architectural increase of 11.8%. When we are, when I mentioned in the revenues that subdivision and land development was through the roof for revenues, well, that's because there's a lot of development going on for larger commercial buildings. And since that's occurring, that means that we're also incurring costs as we do engineering reviews and other reviews, so there's costs associated with that. So as we get more revenue, we have more expenses. We never get behind, it's never flip-flopped, we're always making more revenue than expenses in these line items, but they're offsetting. So we need to also raise our expenses in this line item because we're going to have more expenses, because we're projecting that there's going to be more commercial development, certainly since there's been a number, you know, large land tracts that have been opened up. So I would anticipate to be more large land development next year, which will mean more revenue for us and more expenses. So that's why you see an increase there. Maintenance and machinery, since I came into the office, done the planning and took and analyzed everything, I'm going to hold back my personal comments, but I would just say that some of our equipment is antiquated. So I wanted to see some of the better tools in the hands of staff, so I'm asking for an increase there to replace some of our safety equipment that we use when we're in the field, like road signs and cones and when we're laying out strips to counter traffic, road counters, some of those are extremely old. So in order for us to do our job, we need to have that, you know, we need to have better equipment. And we'll do every part we can to include that in our reimbursements through our NPO as well for transportation projects. But again, it needs to be hardcoded into our expenses in order for us to actually buy the equipment. The agricultural program, this is the offset to the other agricultural program we talked about. I need to upgrade the amount to match what it costs us to preserve a farm this year in the anticipation of preserving at least one farm next year. Conferences and training, it looked like this year when we were trying to get the proper training for staff, we came up short and couldn't attend one training session. So we're just, we were asking for a small bump there from $754 to $860 so that we could have the proper training. We do have professionals, a number of professionals, including myself for the short time I was there, and the new director and others, that try to maintain our credentials so that, you know, our professionalism is maintained and, you know, we're current as far as zoning laws. So that's, we're asking for an increase there. Lastly, the machine and equipment budget line item over $5,000. Put $10,000 in for the replacement. We have a plotter that's, I think, 13 years old in, it's a large format printer, basically. We certainly needed to make zoning maps. We just certainly needed, on a project-by-project basis, when we're doing maps for the NPO, presentations to the community, things of that nature. The good news, I mean, we're putting in for that, but the good news is, this is definitely something that's eligible under general NPO work, but also other grants like the hazard mitigation grant, that we can apply to get the cost of this thing offset. Maybe not all in one fiscal quarter, we could spread that out over a number of quarters. So I could tell you that we could program this right in to be reimbursed. So, but we, again, it's something that needs to be loaded into our expenses as part of our budget in order to actually procure the item. Any questions on this?
Where would that funding come from?
The funding for that machine would come through our NPO. And if there's funding available in the hazard mitigation grant, according to PMA, we would also be eligible to take a portion of that out of that grant. For instance, if we did a contract with somebody and it was, you know, it came up, there was still some funds left over, we can use that for that funding. But we can also apply, we can also apply this as an overhead line item in our NPO fiscal quarter reimbursements. So we can say $2,500 per quarter, spread out until we pay it off. We could just keep going until it's paid off.
Mr. Chair, the cost would have to come out of the general fund. It would be reimbursable over time.
Right.
But it would have to come out of the general fund.
Would you show that in the revenue stream?
We would show, yes. That's going to be shown in the revenue stream that you'll see under, it's spread across 440, 38.
440, 38, highway.
Highway, 440, 36.
435, 12.
And 435, 12, Pendot. So we could, we could spread that across. In other words, even when we get reimbursements, we spread those back over those reimbursement items.
All right, and your position count seems to be the same as previous year?
That's correct.
Let's go to the budget book. On your revenue, talk about subdivision, land development, zoning, zoning applications, Pendot.
Right.
Department of Agriculture, which is the farm preservation?
That's correct.
P-A-D-C-E-D, that's the Department of Community and Economic Development?
Correct.
Looks like the same?
Yeah, same. We have a bike path study project in there.
PMA is the grant for the hazard mitigation?
Correct, that's why I have zero, now you see 75.
And technical study, highway?
Technical study is pretty much, that's where we program in Luzerne County Transportation Authority and Northeast PA Alliance projects.
Highways?
Highway is 80% of our NPO, which would pretty much make up our transportation planner time, all the time spent by staff working on NPO projects.
Sort of funds staffs.
Pretty much funds, that's why that number's odd, is pretty much, that's the meat and potatoes there for staffing.
That is the federal portion.
That's the federal portion. Pardon?
In 2018, it doesn't appear that we've gotten any of that reimbursement.
Right. I mean, when I came in, there was, you know, we obviously needed, we had some, we were in arrears on some fiscal quarter reimbursements. We have since, and I'd like to, I'm glad you brought that up because I want to thank our staff. The staff of the planning department has been fantastic. Specifically, John Petrini, who's not here tonight, he's our new transportation planner, who, him himself, myself, and actually Budget and Finance, everybody's been very helpful in getting the information we needed to submit these reimbursements. So the reimbursements have been sent to Pendot, they've been approved, and I would say that payment is imminent this year for up to $235,000.
You believe that by the end of this calendar year, we're going to have $235,000?
Yeah, that's what I believe. I mean, that's what's been submitted, so.
Three quarters, Mr. Skronski?
That would, that would be three fiscal quarters. So that would, that would take us to over 90% of that budget line item. Actually, it would take us to 90% of the budget revenue for the entire department. But for this budget item, it would get as much, it would take us over.
And what, where are we now with the invoicing?
Well, we have submitted three invoices, and we're working on the fourth, three quarters.
The first three quarters of the year?
The first three quarters, fiscal quarters that we had some arrears on. So they've been submitted and they're already in the works of getting it back.
So what calendar year would those be?
Well, you are going to see, yeah, you're going to see the next calendar year.
I believe we're eight quarters in the rear, so those were the first three of the most recent.
Those would be 2017?
Yes, correct.
Quarter two, quarter three, and quarter four, I'm sorry, 2016, quarter two, 2017, quarter three, 2017, quarter four have been submitted and on their way in.
So we're through 2017.
Through that. Well, we're in, we're in July, we're doing July through September of 2017, quarter one right now. That's almost complete and ready for submittal. I would anticipate you will see that in early, early next year, you will see that one, 2017. Then quarter two, everybody has to understand, there is a lag though. Even if you were completely caught up, you still have to wait for invoicing, you have to wait for a number of items to come in in order for you to get reimbursed. So there are, there are some, there is some time lag in there. But quarter one and two of 2017 should be finished in the first quarter of 2019. So that'll be another $150,000 in the first quarter next year.
What year was that, 2017?
It was calendar year 2017. It's actually state fiscal quarter 2018.
Right, 1718.
1708.
1718, right. So I mean, that's, that's the, that's one of the working quarters we were in right up until June of this year. So that's part of a contract that we were in up until this year.
So at least a year behind.
But you won't be in the first quarter next year.
Yes, you will be.
Well, you will, you will be in, you will be in 2018, and you will be able to, there's enough information, it's all here, and we have worked that, and we're all compliant, so there's no reason why these can't be reimbursed next year.
Yeah. But it'll be for 2018.
For 2018, correct. Now, even if you were completely caught up today, you know, yesterday, you still would have, quarter four, you're not ready to do it January 1.
Right.
You've got to wait most of the next fiscal quarter, or the first annual quarter, probably to get everything in line to get reimbursed. It'd be mid-year anyhow.
Go to the expense side. Wages, nonrepresented, represented, longevity all the way down to benefits, life insurance, those are all employee benefits and wages. Office supplies, you have $1,000. Have you spent money this year?
Yeah, we're at 51% right now.
Okay.
Again, with 500 bucks, we could hit that with one or two items.
Vehicle fuel has been moved to another department?
Correct. Correct. Vehicle fuel has all been moved to road and bridge.
Small tools and minor equipment, looks like you're well on your way to matching at 2,600. Postages all together in one department.
Yep.
Other contractual services?
Yep, we discussed that.
You've spoken about that.
Right.
Engineering and architectural, you spoke about that. Travel expense?
Travel expense is a little lower this year due to staffing shortages. So people just weren't going and doing what they should have been doing.
Mileage reimbursement?
Same thing.
Same, similarly.
Similar scenario.
Advertising, $2,000, are you?
We're at 800.
800.
We're at 800 right now.
That's also because we had fewer zoning hearings, and so there was less to advertise.
Yeah. You never know if you're going to get peppered with a lot of zoning changes, and you can spend a lot of time, respond to a lot of money doing advertisements, you never know. It fluctuates.
Preparing, it looks like you're about halfway.
That's right.
Repairs and maintenance for machinery and equipment, you spoke about that.
Yeah, we busted that this year.
Repairs and maintenance miscellaneous, looks like you're on your way to $1,000. Rent of buildings, what buildings are you renting?
Well, this is a line item where we, we actually get reimbursed, we actually pay the county, we do a budget journal entry to the county's rent line item, and then we bring, because that's there, we can reimburse that to the NPO, so.
So it looks like you're close to that already?
Yeah, well, we methodically do that quarterly.
Insurance auto, repairs and maintenance of vehicle, have you spent any money on that?
There was $400 in there. We didn't spend any money on that this year.
A new vehicle was purchased this year, last year for.
So on the hearing board, you have to have money in there for the hearings.
Yep.
Cultural program, that's the farm preservation, correct?
Correct.
There's a membership, 750, it looks like you're.
Yeah, that should go, that should be closer to 100% probably, we will expand that by the end of the year, you know, to get this guy.
Meeting conference, you talked about that, and the machinery and equipment, you've talked about the.
Yes.
Hardware requirement. Continuing over to the other page, expense reimbursement, is that from NPO?
Which page is that? What page are you referring to?
Budget book?
Oh.
Line 460 dot 28.
You're in revenues.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I was going to say.
Yeah, you're in the ground, sorry.
That's all right. Maybe nervous there.
Okay. Questions from?
Yep.
Planning, zoning?
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, that was a question I had too, Mr. Skronski. Thanks again, gentlemen, for coming. The reimbursement from the, it's line item 50, 550 dot 15, and instead in the, in the summary here, that, not only is the hazard mitigation project also comes from the LCTA and NEPA?
Yes.
Association. Where does that reflect in the budget, the reimbursement?
In the revenue line items. That would fall under technical study?
Oh, it's technical study.
Yeah, technical study.
Okay. 440, 36.
Okay, yep, yeah, I see that.
Right.
So that gets us to about $85,000, and then, oh, I guess it's our local match then that would make the difference up.
Yeah, and then the other one, of course, is 435, 34 for the hazard mitigation.
With that, yes. I was just wondering where the, where the LCTA and NEPA came from.
Yeah, that came out of technical study.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thanks, gentlemen.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Two. You say you're eight quarters in arrears. How many should you really be?
Probably one.
One.
Or two possibly, depending on if there's outstanding invoices.
How did we get so far behind in putting invoices in?
I have no idea. I just know we were, and we needed to get it fixed.
We're really hitting into a personnel issue there. Let's just say that the interim director, as well as the new director, understand the importance of this, of keeping up. But neither of these two gentlemen came anywhere near that during that time period, obviously.
And the one that was there before?
I don't want to get into personnel issues.
Oh, yeah, but you hired him, right?
I hired everybody in the county.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, it's on record, you hired him, and he was in arrears for eight quarters. All right. And in that timeframe, where'd that money come from rather than being reimbursed? Did it come out of the general fund to make payments and everything, all that?
That would have, yes.
So that money's owed to the general fund?
Yeah.
And what's the total dollar amount owed to the general fund?
I don't have the total because we haven't finished all the invoices yet, but right now, the three fiscal quarters that we're getting back is $235,195.
That's for three, okay.
That's right. If you project that forward, so double that.
All right.
Plus.
That's owed to the general fund?
Yep.
All right, that's, and Mrs. Swett wasn't aware of this?
We were, we were found out about it in a neurotic process.
Oh, so it took an auditor to let you know about it? Okay. Okay, all right.
Anyone else?
Thanks for your good work. I mean, you've always done good work for the county, and I really appreciate it, and we've had a lot of conversation when I was a commissioner with you, and you did a great job. I'm glad you're back, so seriously.
Thank you, Ms. Serber. Yep, thank you.
At this point, I believe, Mr. Skronski, we are about three quarters in the rear, correct? At this point, based on what you've submitted and what we anticipate as far as delays?
See, right now.
We're always going to be one quarter in the rear, so.
Yeah. So right now, we're preparing to submit quarter one, 2017, which I think 95% done. And we've already started the paperwork, so we're not doing, we're not waiting for one to finish. We are doing them in parallel. So if we can do them all in one day, we do them all in one day. But again, as information comes in to fill in the gaps, make sure we have all our information. Because if you're off by a penny when you submit to the state, they'll bounce it back. So we're going to make sure that everything's right before it goes in. And that's where some of the labor comes in. You have to be, you have to be really good. So, yeah, quarter one and quarter two, I would say, are simultaneously being prepared of the 2017. So that brings us pretty much into 2018. So the work that we're doing this year still is, there's quarter three and quarter four this year, so. And not every quarter will be the same amount. I mean, if there's not, if there's pass-throughs for projects, the amount will be larger, but again, it's a pass-through, it's a wash for us. But for the work that we do, it offsets the cost of the staff doing the work, doing the good work of the NPO, which obviously benefits us all for road, bridge projects, and other transportation planning projects, so. Can I answer your question?
Yes, you did. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask, if we can, to come back to building and grounds. Mr. McIntosh, who is our newly-appointed supervisor, county engineer, is currently attending an award ceremony for our Rukanda project.
While our entire Department of Boiler Plant is coming forward, I want to personally thank Mr. Skronski once again for his hard work and stepping up where needed. I want to thank him, and I want to, and I want to thank Mr. Heath. He's been here about a week, and he jumped right into a budget hearing. So welcome aboard, Heath, Mr. Heath. So, but we appreciate their work and their service.
Do you want to introduce yourself? I think we only see you once a year or so.
My name is Robert Dudik. I'm with the boiler plant.
Okay. You look at your summary sheet, there's not a lot of change?
No.
So there's very little on the budget sheet, and you're the only person there, which is the same it's been for several years, correct?
20-some years.
20-some years.
Yeah.
So let's go to the budget book. Wages, payroll taxes, Medicare, unemployment, life insurance, those are all your employment compensation. Office supplies, 90 bucks?
Yes.
You're going to spend all that $90?
Uh, yep, that's, that's.
Ink toner first.
Pretty much for ink, ink for the printer, yeah.
Okay. Small tools and mining equipment, 1350?
Yes.
There you go. Looked like you only had to spend about 200 bucks when this was prepared, but.
No, there's more than that on there. There should be more.
Okay.
So some would be caught up.
They didn't have, it wasn't processed yet.
Telephone and internet, down to 1250, was 1,800 in the 17 budget. Advertising, 100 dollars, electricity, 10,000. That actual.
Yes.
Actual expenditure. Gas, you've reduced a little bit, from 170 down to 165?
Yes.
Sewer bill is up from 3,500 to 8,500?
Yes. That coincides with the water and with the leak we had under the sidewalk for steam last year. Yeah, that really blew the water and sewer budget.
Did any of that, did any of that water that went into the river last year appropriate to that too? Or did they left that main on out there on the street for about a month?
No.
No, okay.
Is that corrected now with the change in the heating?
Yes, that's, that line's now severed. It's no longer in use.
Because of the heating system here and now in the courthouse, so you don't have to pump it all the way over here?
No.
So do we, well, you think the sewer and water costs should go down?
Yes.
Because you projected an increase in sewer and the same cost for water. So is that a good number, or should we be looking at numbers lower?
Right now, it's an unknown because everything's new down there, so I have no idea what the, what it's gonna be.
I think this goes back to our discussion regarding the McClure project. We really truly believe we're gonna have a savings. But I'd like a full year to look at the numbers to see if, where we are, where we need, the numbers need to be. I think the 2020 budget, you'll see the, hopefully, the general fund savings.
Yes.
If we don't see the general fund savings, then we're gonna, there's a guarantee with McClure and that project anyway.
And none of the bills since I started, started up the boiler plant this year have came in yet, so I have no idea what we're looking at.
So you haven't had any firsthand information?
No.
Okay. Bill, repairs and maintenance for building, $5,000?
Yes, I have roof repairs for next year.
Just maintenance kind of repairs?
Yes.
Minor.
Minor.
Repairs, maintenance for machinery and equipment, you have new equipment, don't you?
Yes.
So should we have $30,000 in here?
Yes, because there's contractual services for water treatment, boiler cleanings.
Okay, so it's more than repairs?
Yes, there's more than repairs.
Permits, repairs, maintenance miscellaneous, $1,000. Permits, 100 bucks, inspection fees of 150, which is significant down from the 500 number. License fee, you have nothing in the budget?
No, because we no longer have to deal with DEP because we went down to smaller boilers. So now we're, we don't have to worry about the clean air permits now.
Good. And then the meeting conference and training phase, you have 2,500? Looks like you've been spending about 1,300 a year.
There's more, there should be, there's more coming off the end of the month into December, as long as they don't cancel the class.
Those are classes you attend?
Yes.
Question for Mr. Dudik.
Just one question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Thanks for coming out. And maybe for Mr. O'Neil as well. Just on the line item about gas, 550 dot 40. Any ideas of how we stand with the gas amount now, like November 13th current? Any ideas?
The plan is I'm still paying to heat the courthouse too because this building's never had gas before. So since I originally paid out of my budget to heat the building.
Yeah.
So we're just gonna keep it that way for now.
Okay.
Yeah, there may be some savings, but I hesitate to quantify that amount at this point in time because we just don't know. We don't have enough history. The project was just completed. The boiler just came online about three weeks ago. So it's virtually impossible for us to pinpoint what the savings may be at this point.
And that's helpful, because I'm looking at the 2017 actuals and it's about 120,000 there, but obviously it's a little different situation than we had last year.
Plus, it depends on the weather too. I mean, the colder the winter, the more you're gonna use and.
Probably used a couple over the past couple days, a couple extra.
But we'll find out this week what it's gonna be because it's gonna get cold.
All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anything else for Mr. Dudik? He has a little different situation this year, right, because of the fact that courthouse knock-ins and zoning.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a whole new ballgame here.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. You have.
Mr. Rosenkrantz?
You're up. Okay, Mr. Rosenkrantz, back with us?
I'm back. I take it you won't accept my budget as presented with no questions.
Well, Mr. Rosenkrantz, you seem to bring your questions with you.
They follow.
Looking at your summary sheet, expense reimbursement, looks like it's a decrease of about $20,000?
Yes, that's expected savings through the ADP, payroll admin, anticipated savings. Typically, the invoices have payroll services on there. So we're anticipating some savings on that overall cost for 911.
Okay.
And that is our reimbursement amount for administrative services for the 911 budgets.
Expenses, you've reduced your office supplies?
Yes, we reduced it by about 12%. That's just based on budgetary historical costs. And that's a shared cost between 911 funding and general fund costs.
Cleaning supplies, you've upped it?
Yeah, we upped it about 500 dollars. I had to do a budgetary transfer this year. 24/7 facility, we go through quite a few cleaning supplies. So that's pretty reserved though for the facility for 2,500 dollars.
And vehicle fuel has been moved?
Yeah, that's been moved to a road and bridge shared line item. We did not reduce it by 100% overall. We're still gonna have those costs, just in a shared line item under road and bridge.
Special legal services, you had a reduction of 1,000 dollars?
Yes, that's the line item that's typically for legal advertisements and any cost. But the Office of Law has been absorbing a lot of those costs, so we're reducing it again by 22%.
And then R/M vehicle, what is that?
That's repairs, maintenance vehicle for our fleet. We've reduced that. With that, we have eight vehicles for 911 for tower site maintenance and things. So we've reduced that as well. Based on historical costs.
I have a question.
Shortly.
The revenues and the expense reimbursement. Could you explain how there's gonna be a savings in the expense that's associated with preparation and payroll when we're actually paying more to have the payroll done?
Well, a lot of those costs were shared for the payroll position, the payroll clerk, that was a 30-some-year employee. So I think the costs administratively are a lot higher. You have W-2 costs that were built into that for processing. A lot of those are absorbed now into the ADP contract and we're anticipating a savings for that.
You don't have a piece of that ADP contract, which is an additional $100,000?
No, not to my knowledge, no. No, this is an overall general, the contract is for payroll services for the entire county, but we have 95 employees.
Right, so you do pay a piece of that?
Yes, and those costs are invoiced by budget and finance.
Okay, but don't we have some payroll expenses associated with the employee? Because we didn't lose any employees.
We did not.
And aren't there some, isn't there still some payroll work being done here?
Yes.
So how that, I mean, we added $100,000 in expense.
Correct.
To do payroll. How are the assigned pieces that go out to the divisions, how could the expense go down?
I'll have to defer to Mr. Swett unless he puts these numbers together. I'll get the information for it.
All right.
And that's not all administrative costs for ADP. That's other administrative costs for budget and finance that we're expecting to save.
Okay. All right. If you have, do you have a breakdown of those, those costs?
We get an annual invoice from budget and finance, so I'm sure Mr. Swett's can supply that. And I have to supply that to the state annually because that direct line item is hardcoded to an expense line item in our 911 funding.
Sure.
So typically, we were allowed one, up to 1% for administrative costs. But again, not only is that anticipated savings, but that's also a reduction or that overall surplus that we had or the unencumbered funding typically in the 911 fund. We have to start reducing some of these line items to be more in line of what our actual revenue is annually. So we don't have that million-dollar surplus left over from all the vacancies we had over the years. So we're gonna start seeing the budget get tighter for 911 and we're starting to bring these cost and revenue line items into line with more of an accurate figure based on the lack of the surplus.
Okay. If you have a breakdown, that invoice, I'd like to see that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Going to the budget book. You talked about the expense reimbursement. Go to.
So you're actually going to the individual budgets now?
Yes.
Summaries?
No, budget.
The worksheet.
Okay.
So now we're on the 260 worksheet?
No, the 100, the actual budget worksheet, New World. There you go.
There we go.
You talked about that expense reimbursement? Going to the expense side?
Yes, that's the invoice.
You don't have any wages or payroll taxes included, office supplies, we talked about selling supplies, the vehicle fuel, gas, small tools and minor equipment. You have the same number as last year, 300. Looks like you've spent over 200 dollars this year.
Yes.
Postages moved to consolidate that. Other contractual services, same number as last year, it looks like you spent about?
1,500?
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct. Special legal services, just talked about. You don't have any telephone or internet expenses in the budget?
They're all under 911 funding.
Okay. Travel expenses, same as last year, it looks like you just about spent it totally this year?
Yes.
$2,000. Advertising, 500 dollars, looks like you spent it over half. Renting, 100 bucks, water, nothing. Repairs and maintenance of the building, $25,000.
Yes.
Which is the same number as you had last year and it looks like you'd spent it, according to this book, over almost 14,000. You have more.
Yes, well, a lot of those are the maintenance contracts as well for.
Maintenance contracts.
Lawn and maintenance and support.
So you're gonna spend the 25, you think?
Yes, yeah, that's a very, very good figure based on historical.
Okay.
Figures, but that includes, you know, supplies, lawn care, maintenance, plumbing services, being, having a building 24/7, 20 years old.
Okay.
We have some significant maintenance costs.
Repairs and maintenance machinery and equipment, you have $7,000. Have you, when this book was repaired, you only had about 2,200 spent?
Yeah, I'm showing about 54% spent at 3,772.
Okay.
That was as of November 8th, so.
Insurance auto.
Again, that's for maintenance.
Repairs and maintenance miscellaneous, $11,000. You had spent it about 8,600 when the book was repaired.
Yep, we're at about 87% now.
87%. Auto, nothing in there for insurance. Repairs and maintenance of vehicle, we talked about that. Capital and eligible, what does that mean?
So the capital and eligible, if you recall, was a line item that we funded with about 20 to 22,000 dollars to finish the 911 backup facility. This past year, we took a direct lightning strike at EMA and there were some grounding issues and things that still need to be done. We had some equipment damaged. So I'd like to keep that line item funded for those capital projects that may come up. Additionally, with our utilities being covered by the 911 fund, we saved the general fund over 100,000 dollars a year by doing that. So there's a net gain of about 80,000 dollars a year since 2015, since they were, become eligible expenses.
And this money will allow you to complete that backup facility?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Lightning strike covered by insurance?
I don't think the damage was significant enough. I think you have to have a certain threshold for deductibles.
Do we check with insurance?
We did check with our insurance carrier, Shell Sparrows, we reached out to, and it didn't meet the threshold. Basically, we had some computers that were destroyed in the lightning strike, monitors, things like that.
What's your deductible?
10,000.
It's 10,000, yes, so it didn't rise to that. But to do the grounding work is much more significant than 10,000 dollars. The tower site, I believe, needs to be properly grounded as well, so that there's some mitigation things that need to be done. And Lucy may be able to speak more about that in her budget.
Okay. That's the 100 fund, right?
That is the general fund and overall, we've actually reduced it by almost 7,000 dollars, if you look at that. Just for general operating expenses for the general fund side, we reduced that significantly with the lion's share of them being absorbed by the 911 funding, thanks to Act 12 of 2015.
Okay. Thank you. Emergency management. Lucy, you wanna introduce yourself again?
Hi, Lucy Morgan. I'm the Director of Emergency Management.
Okay, very good. Looking at the general fund 100. No change in the revenues, Sarah?
No.
Looking at the one-page document and communication expenses, you asked for 2,200 dollars for telephone and internet?
During our budget review, they asked us to move that to the 550 dot 22 telephone/internet account. So it's just moved to a different line item.
Repairs and maintenance of the buildings. In 18, you had 7,500, and now you're looking at 30,000?
Yes, there's an approximate 25,000 dollars for a new roof, unfortunately, and some HVAC repairs. So that's what pushed that number up.
It's a rehab on the roof, correct?
27 years, so we're getting to the point of.
It's not complete replacement.
It's not a complete replacement?
No.
What percentage, do you have an idea?
What percentage? It's a rehab on all the seams and some patching work. So it's something that should extend the life probably, we're hoping another 10 years before it has to be.
Should that be a capital expense?
If it was a new roof, I would've, I would've considered it capital. I don't know if, under what criteria we should. I would've considered putting a new roof on the building. If it's repair work, I typically would not include it under capital.
Mr. Chair, was the threshold 5,000 dollars?
Excuse me?
Was it the threshold 5,000 dollars?
I believe that's correct, Mr. Earl.
Yeah. Anything over 5,000 should have been capital.
And there's a life expectancy, which you're saying 10 years?
We're hoping we can get another 10 years out of it with these improvements. I mean, to replace that roof is probably gonna be over 100,000, well over 100,000 dollars.
To replace it?
Yes.
Okay.
Well over that.
Repairs and maintenance miscellaneous?
We have a fiber cable replacement project for 11,000.
And again, that's, Mr. O'Neil?
That is for some work that IT is doing in the building.
So should that be a capital expense because it's 11,000 dollars? And I don't believe that's the type of replacement that happens on an annual basis. It's probably.
It's not necessarily annual, that's correct. I wasn't aware of the 5,000 dollar threshold for capital expenditures. So I will apologize for that now because that may be an issue going forward in our budget as well.
Okay. Going to the budget book. Under revenue, you have grant, EMPG, 75,000 dollars. That's the grant you have currently.
Correct. That reimburses half the salary for myself and the deputy coordinator, half the salary and benefits.
Okay. And then down a little further there, you have salary expense reimbursement, 75,000.
Right.
Post, and it was 87 last year?
Right, it should actually be 82,000. That's something we're gonna have to amend. We reran the figures and we can actually get a little bit more reimbursement back. That's for 100% funding for the emergency planning specialist for the task force and 50% funding for the Act 165 coordinator.
So you think we're gonna get another 7,000 dollars?
Yes.
Very good. Keep finding those 7,000 dollars, that'll be a big help. Going to expense side, starting with wages down to benefits, life insurance. Those are all employee compensation benefits, correct?
Yes.
Office supplies, you've asked for an increase of about 1,100 dollars?
They moved the spring water to that line and we did a lot of improvements inside the building, carpeting, paint, tile. But we'd like to start upgrading the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. Gradually, with some other grant funding, we would like to eventually get new chairs and tables. and tables. That's the last piece of that emergency operations center to be upgraded, and we're using some other grant funding to help us do that gradually.
So that's under office supplies?
Yes.
Okay, gas vehicles removed. Vehicle diesel, you have some diesel vehicles there?
We do, and we have a generator in-house that would also run on the diesel, the Whacker Light that we used for the election. We have a couple portable generators, they all use diesel.
Okay. Small tools and minor equipment, $2,000, looks like you spent about 1,200 when this book was published?
No, we're just about at 2,000 at this point, sir.
Another 2,000?
We're at 2,000. We're at 99% as of Friday.
Okay. Postage has been moved to consolidate, telephone and internet, you're asking for an $8,000 increase?
We are. The task force originally paid for three of our phones for three employees, and now since Skooka County is not the fiscal fiduciary county anymore, we have to pay for those phones now and then get reimbursed. And then it's also for one phone for the emergency planning manager, and then that would be for, also for radio and antenna expenses from the lightning strike for amateur radio group.
Okay. Other communications, that's a $2,200.
That's where we need to remove that. They asked us to put that in the telephone/internet line, so that should be removed completely.
$2,200 should be removed, that should be zero then?
Yes.
Travel expense, 100 bucks, advertising 100, insurance 900, I'm sure that's a figure Budget Finance probably gave you?
Correct.
Electricity is the same as last year, water, same. Repairs and maintenance of buildings, we talked about that, roof repair. Machinery equipment, same, $1,000, looks like you're approaching that number now. Repairs and maintenance miscellaneous, that's a 16,000, that was the fiber cable...
Fiber cable replacement, yes.
Insurance auto is not, zero, repairs, maintenance vehicles, zero, dues and membership, $1,000. Have you expended any of that this year?
We did not. The reason for that is we try to use any grant funding we can. That would be, Pima has changed their regulations now for training, where before they paid for everything, so now there are some costs associated with that. But luckily, last year, a couple of the conferences were canceled and we were able to use grant funding. So that would just be for anything that's not covered by grants.
Subscriptions, $4,000, which is a pretty good increase, Sarah?
This year, we just got a bill from IT that we had to start paying our Microsoft contract, so that's an extra 1775 annually, and then the internet prorated at 320.
Okay.
Also, with the digital TVs that we need in the building, the cable box fee has gone up, and we have quite a few in the building.
Meeting, conference and training expenses, $2,000?
That covers any food, along with training and conference fees, that covers any food for any activations, which unfortunately, we've had a lot of. So when we are asking people to be there all day and night, we feed them.
Very good. Questions for emergency management?
Just one, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan, good to see you.
Hi.
Just the repairs line items, the 550s there, 45, and forgive me, the maintenance for buildings, 30,000 proposed last year, oh, 2017 was about 25 grand. I see this year, we're on about 7,000. Do you anticipate meeting that line item, oh, in 2018, it was only 7,500?
Yeah.
I guess why the increase again?
Because of the roof.
That was the roof, okay.
Mr. O'Neill.
Roof, and there's some HVAC work, some VAV control units that have to be replaced.
And then the repairs and the maintenance line, dot 48 there as well, 16,000?
That's the fiber cable.
That's a fiber cable replacement.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Before she leaves, you haven't been here, but I personally want to thank you for the citizens of Luzerne County for what you did after the tornado went through. I mean, you look at that, you wouldn't even know where to start. Thank God we have somebody like you that's, I mean, that has that knowledge, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much, it's very much appreciated, and we thank you for the support, the county manager, our division head, and all the county agencies that supported us, and we're very fortunate in Luzerne County to have such great first responders, because without them, and thank God, it just came through later, because we dodged such a bullet with that, and it's, I tear up just thinking about it. So we're very fortunate in this county. Thank you so much, thank you.
Road and Bridge. Mr. Plush, you've been here before, but...
Yeah, it's my fifth budget.
Okay, looking at the one-page information, your revenues, look at it, you're going to pay up to $8,000 from seven, huh? Where does the revenue come from?
For general fund?
General fund.
For, that is for vehicle and vehicle reimbursement is scrap metal.
Okay. Going down to expenses, vehicle fuel, gas, it looks like you're the group that's going to be paying for all the gas.
Yeah, we've, it was decided to do all, instead of having other departments...
All general fund.
Yeah, you put under one umbrella.
Is that 95,000 going to be a number that we're going to live with, or is that...
Yeah, that was based on some calculations that we ran through our fleet management system, so that should be fairly accurate.
So we feel comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Mr. Urban?
You're going to pay for all the gas in your budget, are you going to then let the different departments know how much gas they're using?
Yeah, we have a fuel for system at the terms...
Okay, so you're just going to, all the money's going to be in your account?
Yeah, we'll be able to provide a breakout by department upon request. That can be done through the software program that we have.
Reimbursement from those departments that is reimbursable?
Yes, for non-general fund.
Non-general fund, it's actually in their budgets. We only, the only general fund comes through the Road and Bridge Department.
I just want to make sure.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I'd like to see the breakout, Mr. O'Neill. If you could show that from comparing last year's budgets, budget rather, about how...
What period would you like that report run for?
Just for last year, for 2017.
For 2017?
Exactly, how it shook down with all the other departments. I mean, I'm guessing in the aggregate, we spent 95,000, probably a little less, just because costs are always going up in 2017, but, yeah, but see, I'd appreciate that. And anytime we do consolidate these kind of line items, I'd like to see that too, Mr. Manager.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks.
Going down to next item, repair, maintenance of roads, increase it by 25,000, which is 100% increase?
Yeah, I assume that we're just lagging behind a little bit on the road conditions. They need to be drained. Most of our issues, we've determined, have not just been deterioration of the road, it's been the drainage issues. And we have to really address the drainage issues before we could start really spending the money for the roads, and that's, that's an increase due to that.
And then repair...
That's not covered by liquid fuels money.
It's not covered by liquid fuels. Repair, maintenance of vehicles, you've gone from 20,000 to 50,000.
Yeah.
Costs by vendors. Who are the vendors?
Well, we're currently down one mechanic, we only have one mechanic downstairs. We've been sending some items out over to, I believe we're contracted with...
We send, much of, we did an RFP for basic maintenance services such as oil change, filters, things of that nature, and we awarded that to McCarthy Tire, so we've been taking some...
You currently have three mechanic openings, or two mechanic openings?
Two mechanic openings.
Two mechanic openings, we've advertised numerous times, so if anybody knows any mechanics that want a position, let us know, because we are continually applying for those jobs as well as the equipment operator jobs, and we've had a small number of applicants, and actually no applicants in some time.
And what do you want them to do, change oil? What's their, what's their main goal?
It's a diesel mechanic, they should, they should have their certification and be able to inspect PA certification for inspections, some of the requirements. It ranges from oil changes up to brake jobs, gaskets and electronic repairs.
Your salary's competitive? Your salary's competitive?
No.
No, that's probably the primary reason why we haven't gotten any applicants.
Looking at the budget book. Your expense reimbursement, we've talked about. Going through your expenses, wages all the way down to benefits, life insurance, those are all for your employees, compensation and benefits for employees, so look at office supplies, $2,000, are you going to hit that number? Looks like when this book was prepared, you were under 600 dollars.
We're at 40% right now, and I know that we just had a fairly sizable order put in this week, so I don't know that we'll be at, I don't know that we'll be at the 2,000, but we should be well between 12 and 1,500.
Okay. Material supply requisition, asking for a $3,000 increase, looks like you spent about 9,300 dollars when the book was repaired.
That's at 10,700 as of Friday, so we're 71%. This is for items such as concrete, any miscellaneous items, wash, spray, things of that nature that come up.
Okay. Parts, I assume that's parts for vehicles, $70,000, it looked like you only spent 33,000 when the book was published.
Well, keep in mind that this item was, was, this item has only been hit this hard since we were down on our mechanic, so this reflects, I think, you know, there was a higher expenditure towards the latter half of 2018.
So parts, if you have people working as mechanics, you use them, and you have to buy more parts, correct?
Yeah, correct.
If you don't, then you're paying vendors more.
At 57%, yes, as of Friday on this, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Fuel for vehicles, we talked about that. Small tools and equipment, you have a quest for 2,500, looks like you spent about 1,900 when the book was published.
That's correct.
Postage is consolidated, engineering and architectural, $2,000 increase, are you going to approach that 48,000?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Where are we at now?
37,566.
37, through the end of October?
Correct. That actually was, yeah, through the end of October, first week of November.
So that's 11, more than 10-plus months, right?
That's correct.
Telephone/internet, you reduce that to 4,800 from 8,000. Other communication expenses, the same, 480, it looks like you're going to probably spend that. Travel expenses are reduced down to 250 from 300. Advertising increased a little bit from 400 up to 500. electricity, 24,000, gas, 2,500, sewer, 1,000, water, 1,800, those are all the same as last year. Repairs and maintenance of roads, we've talked about that, increased from 25,000 to 50. Insurance auto, no, nothing in that line item. Repairs and maintenance of vehicles, we've talked about that, 50,000. Licensing fees, same number, 500. And that's your budget right at this point, from the general fund, correct?
That's correct.
Questions for Road and Bridge?
Yeah, what does our fleet look like tough for the coming winter?
Our fleet, as far as our...
Trucks, how many trucks?
Our trucks, we have, we have two trucks for every driver at this point. We received one of our new trucks that was ordered last year, the second one's coming this week, we should have the third one by the end of November.
How many backhoes do you have?
I believe we have three. I'd have to, don't quote me on that, I believe we have three. And they're, I know we have two stored at the district garage, I believe we have one here at the Road and Bridge Garage. And I know we also had, two of them were in being repaired, I think they're back at this point, but two of them were in being repaired.
One needed a floor or something.
Yes.
We have a preventive maintenance, so it doesn't happen when those new trucks come in, what happened?
We did, we did, we actually had those undercoated as part of the purchase, part of the purchase, we had a new undercoating that is being used by PennDOT, that's supposed to greatly extend. One of the big problems we had with our plow trucks were the frames were actually rusting from the inside out, and it was creating a huge problem, it wasn't able to be fixed, and most of our trucks don't have high mileage on them.
Yeah, and the trucks up on top looked like they were brand new, it was undercarriage.
Right, so that's why we...
All rusted up.
We spent, I believe the cost was about 800 to $1,000 per truck, but we felt that that was a worthwhile investment, since that was probably the thing that we were having the most problem with, with the older trucks, was that the frames were actually rusting and creating problems, they were, the frames were swelling.
Okay, what other question? A $5 fee we implemented, what roads have been done with that money?
We haven't received it yet.
At this point, we have not received it.
We'll start receiving it in June of 2019.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Neill, one specific question from a constituent, Ransom Road, Mr. O'Neill, what's the status on that?
The story on Ransom Road is we were able to pull together some funding, and we put out an RFP to have that road repaired. I don't want to say extensively, but we're hoping to the point where it will be somewhat problem-free for the next three to four years. That contract was awarded to American Asphalt, we're just keeping our fingers crossed with the weather. Obviously, we're heading into some cold weather, some snow that's predicted, but at this point, they've indicated that they will be able to complete the work before the end of the season.
Fantastic.
There's actually two projects currently going on. There's a drainage project on Ransom Road that's being done by Southwest Management, they're doing the drainage part of it, and American Asphalt's doing just base repair in the worst areas that we had designated in the field for them, the estimate, so, both of which are, one's definitely under contract, it was signed, the other one is waiting the contracts back from American Asphalt, but they and the kid both, which will be done by the end of the year.
By the end of the year, very good, thank you both.
One more, your state liquid fuels, how much are you getting from them next year?
Liquid fuels?
Yeah.
I'm going to have, that's the next topic, I'm going to have 75,000, I'm going to carry over to next year.
Your reimbursements, have they gone up the last couple of years from the state?
Actually, the reimbursement should go up, it was up the last time, it should go up again this year.
We raised it 50,000 for 2019.
Local bridge inspection through a local contract instead of through Harrisburg, so that money comes out of there, they usually take it off the top of our liquid fuels, so this year, we should get it.
Right, but the overall liquid fuels funds?
1.2 million is our anticipated revenue for 2019.
When the last transportation bill went through, the townships received a sizable increase, we didn't get much of an increase.
No, the counties, the counties' liquid fuels are based on a flat fee that was established, I believe, back in the, I don't know how long, it was quite a while ago, but it's not like, it's not like the local...
Yeah, back in the 20s or something.
Yeah, 1926, I believe it was.
That's another thing that the solicitor needs to do is, that needs to be updated.
Well, that's, that's good in some respects, because we were able to negotiate with Butler Township, and we're hopefully going to be conveying roads, turning back roads over to them, so because we're on a flat fee, that will not reduce our liquid fuels allocation. So it can be a plus or a minus depending upon how you look at it.
If we get rid of our roads...
It's a good tool that we have to allow us, because the local municipalities, if they're willing to take them over, will increase their liquid fuels allocation where ours will remain the same. So it's kind of a win-win, which is a good tool for us to be able to use when we're talking to municipalities about taking over roads.
But you got road and bridge, you have road and bridge.
Correct, correct.
You have money for both, right?
Well, most of our bridge money, yes, that is for both, but we also have the other funds for the bridge funding.
Just one question.
Okay, let's move on to engineering?
I have just one question. So I think that a lot of people in the county are under the impression that the road repairs that are done are done by our own road and bridge employees.
In some cases, they are, in many cases, they are.
So you just talked about two projects that are contracted out, like what percentage of projects are contracted out and what percentage are done by our own employees?
As far as done by our own forces, you mean?
Yeah, roughly half, I mean...
Well, see, our own forces don't, they do small paving projects or... Well, see, our own forces don't, well, they do small paving projects, or base repair, or patchwork. They don't, it's not cost-effective for us to actually, because we don't have our own paver, so we rent that equipment out. We don't have enough manpower.
A better question would be, how many people do we have? We're way under staff.
We have...
Twenty-two people. It's...
How many, how many people?
No, I believe we're down to eight on the, on the road.
We have 22 positions.
But we have 22 positions.
We have 22 positions, including our, yes.
And you have eight people for how many miles of road?
128.
I get it, but I just wanted to know.
I'm just asking a question.
I just...
I'm allowed to ask a question.
I know, but I asked a question first, and he was starting to answer it.
All right, let's get back on topic.
Percentage, I would say this year is actually higher than normal, because we did a lot of, we did rent a paver and do it, but I'm going to say it's going to be like maybe 15%. Ours, 85 contracted out.
Dollar-wise, yeah.
Normally. I think we had eight, nine?
Eight, we're down to eight people.
Eight currently, and we have 125 miles of road.
So, if we had, if we were fully staffed, if we had all 22 positions filled, would we be doing more in-house?
We have full staff. We really concentrate on the priority items, which are brush cutting, soil reconstruction or clearing, and patch repair with, done with base repair. Right now, sometimes they're just putting stuff in a hole or going over the top of it. Base repair is digging down a good three, four, five inches, putting the right kind of material at that point, then putting a top gun out and sealing it. We're just not, again, staffed enough to get all of that stuff done, so we try to concentrate on most important items. And so, we sometimes, most of the time, it's easier to put on RFP, good, good price, put it out for bid. Like, we got a great price, the American Asphalt being so close to Chase Road, we got that was a very low than was originally estimated. So, it's beneficial to have the larger projects, because there's a lot of traffic controllers. There's a lot more involved than just sending a couple guys out there to fix the hole.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Engineering.
We're not going to the liquid fuels?
No. Engineering. On the one-page sheet, we have a decrease in revenues from 50,000 to 40,000.
Yeah, that's, it's more in line with the average we've been getting. We've seen a little slowdown in subdivisions. That's pretty much what that is, a subdivision review. It's usually 3, 350, $4 a pop. Right this year, we're at like, last I looked, we were at 35. So, we should finish out the year around 40, so it makes more sense.
What does SALDO mean?
SALDO is...
Subdivision and Land Development ordinance.
It's Land Development and Subdivision Review.
Okay. Expenses, engineering, architectural, gas, and increase to 75,000 for 450 to 525.
Yeah. Yeah. So, with the decrease in the capital fund and contingencies, the items that come up during the course of the year, investigation into those deficiencies, that's what I'm asking for.
Okay. Going to the budget book?
What's that?
Going to the budget book. For engineering, you talked about the review, 50,000 to 40. Expense reimbursement, $500, which is what you asked for.
That's only on a re-review. It happens on a rare occasion. It's not something we really bank on, but it does happen.
Going to the expense side, wages down to benefits, life insurance, those are all salary, compensation, benefits, expenses. Office supplies, $1,000. It looks like you're almost there this year.
Mm-hmm.
Postage, moved to a different line item. Management and consulting services, 40,000. Looks like you only had spent about a little bit over 12,000 when this book was published.
At 97% today, Friday, I'm sorry.
So, you're almost at the 40,000 then?
We're just about at 40,000. 38,761.
Engineering, architectural, you've asked for a $75,000 increase.
We'll hit the 450 this year for sure.
Excuse me?
We'll hit the 450 mark this year for sure.
Okay.
And due to what, what's the increase due to?
Because of the lack of funds in the capital budget. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
It's, it's picking up a lot of the projects and some of the unknown, you know, on, on things that we are unable to forecast, maintenance-wise, such as the repair over DRO building that we're starting this week, and things of that nature that just seem to pile up.
Telephone, internet, nothing there. Other communication expenses, the same, 1440. It looks like you spent about 1,100 when this book was published. Travel expense, $1,000. Looks like you only spent a little bit over 300. Are you close to that, $1,000 or $500?
Well, going forward, we have to spend more training and travel time for MS4, the DEP application. We have to send consistently every year at least three, four guys to get training for that, and it's going to take, they're not as local as they, some of them are.
Miles reimbursement, looks like you hadn't spent any up until...
That's tied to the same reasoning for the travel with the MS4.
Advertising, you reduce from 500 down to 300. Due to the membership, nothing. Subscriptions, 15,000. What have you spent there?
The subscriptions, the 15,000 was the amount of money that we budgeted. We haven't decided upon software, but at one time, if you recall, we had invested in facility due. It was prior to my arriving here, and I believe it was about a $27,000, $28,000 annual recurring expense. And at the time I came on board, we really hadn't implemented the system. So, we canceled the subscription, and we were looking at more cost-effective ways to manage our operations. We've looked at and had some vendors in, but unfortunately, we just haven't come to a conclusion. So, we'd like to keep that in for next year. Again, it's about half the cost of what we had budgeted in the past for that product.
Well, back on 17, you budgeted 21,000. We're at 15 now.
Right. Well, like I said, it was a higher cost at one time. The facility due product was, was a higher cost, and I think it was actually higher than 21,000 the last year that we had it.
Okay.
But we canceled that.
And then meeting, conference, and training fees, you just talked about some training. You bumped that to 1,500 from 1,000. It looks like you haven't spent too much at that point.
That's that training, the MS4 training.
Okay. Any questions for engineering?
Ballpark. What would a paver and a miller cost?
Say it again?
Ballpark. What would a paver and a milling machine cost?
Pavers are...
We don't have a paver or a milling machine either.
We don't have a paver. We rent one.
That's why we're not capable of doing the big jobs.
Yeah. You know, we can, we can afford to buy a paver.
Well, how much ballpark?
I'm going to say...
Mr., I'd like to...
Couple hundred thousand dollars.
Forty or 50?
Would you have an estimate on your paver?
We wouldn't have to pay for a new paver.
Okay.
What's a new, is there any new paver? It's not ours.
It depends on what you buy. I mean, to be quite honest, with our staffing, I would be more concerned about having the talent to operate.
Yeah, that's the bigger issue. We can get a paver, but...
Our people don't do that on a regular basis, and to have somebody, it's like any other skill, technical trade skill, that, I mean, the more you do it, obviously, the more proficient you become.
I understand. I was just wondering, ballpark, what would be? Because we only have eight people, and I totally agree with you. That's why we don't do the big jobs, because we don't have the people to do that.
Right.
And we don't have the machinery to do that.
That's correct.
Well, there's different sized pavers. There's the big ones and the small ones, and we can probably get one to work for our guys. They get us some training to do it, but that level effort to get that done, it just seems to be more extensive than we're capable of.
All right.
Questions, other questions? Okay, let's go back to the other funds.
Okay.
Engineers with Fund 194.
Capital.
BNC Series A 2008 project.
That was, that's our capital fund, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I apologize, but we were not, I was not prepared to review that. I thought that was already accepted and approved.
Well, the capital budget has been accepted and approved.
Capital, yeah. So, we didn't, I didn't prepare sheets for that, for that fund.
But it is part of our capital budget, correct?
Correct, correct.
It is the capital budget.
It is the capital budget, yes.
And let's go to Fund... That's part of the capital budget. Liquid fuels, Funds 200. Let's go and do that. Liquid fuels.
I just want to point out that a couple of our, on, on your summary sheets, as you will see, this is an example, there, there are what is in bold print, and I have them listed as revisions. Those are items that are contrary to what you have in front of you. I do have the figure that you should have in your budgets crossed out, followed by the adjusted figure that we would like to submit for consideration, and the reasons are obviously listed there in the column as to why we made those adjustments.
Those will be part of the proposed budget amendments at the end, at the process as well.
Budget amendments for each and every one, right? So, looking at liquid fuels, road lighting, you're going from 50,000 down to 40,000?
Yes. We're hoping to realize the savings. I mean, this was not something that was done as part of the McClure project, so we've been able to see a slight change, reduction in electricity due to highway lighting that we've had installed, cross valley, et cetera.
Okay. Cross valley and the bridge over by...
We did it at the bridge, yep.
So, that's a couple of...
I happened to be there the other night, and it came out very nicely. I thought I haven't...
Yeah, I was by the other night, and it looked very good.
I haven't got any complaints, but...
They did a nice job.
As a matter of fact, it's a little, it's a little bright if you happen to look up at it. I will say that much, so.
Carry forward, you went from 832,500 down to 75,000, and that's one of those revisions because the foothills drive has been delayed to 2019, correct?
We had a larger paving project that was bid out last year. We didn't have enough funds, it came in pretty high, we didn't have enough funds to do it, so we decided to separate it to a drainage and a paving project. The drainage work is being done this year, and that, like, case carryover's not going to be enough. We'll spend most of that money.
Okay. On the expense side, you have the diesel fuel, reduction, 50,000 down to 40, again in line with the average over the past four years. Electricity, like, highway lighting, a reduction again due to the LED. Repair and maintenance of roads, you've gone from 250 to 675. And again, because of that foothills drive?
It's foothills drive, but we took it from, instead of having a general construction item at 5, 599.13, we decided to put everything into repair and maintenance of roads, instead of having two separate categories.
And I skid from 75,000 down to 60,000. Salt from 290 down to 250,000. And general construction from a million dollars all the way down to zero because of the fact you put the money into the road projects, correct?
Correct.
Questions regarding liquid fuels? Okay. Look at the budget sheets in the book. Good cover, just about everything there. On the revenue side, sales supplies, 1,000 bucks to PennDOT, getting the $50,000 more. Interest income, the same. Investments, the same. Road lighting, we talked about, and fees and licenses, slight reduction. Spent side, diesel fuel, we talked about, advertising, a reduction from 300 down to 200. Electricity, we spoke about. Gas, now here you have it under liquid fuels because you can get reimbursed there?
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
Sewer, nothing. Sanitation, 4,200 versus 4,000. Maintenance of roads, 600,000, which is what you talked about there in the 250. Bridges, 64, 650, which is almost the same number as last year. Machinery equipment, you have a slight reduction from 7,500 down to 5,000. Vehicle repairs and maintenance, slight increase from 125,000 to up to 130,000. Anti-skid, salt, talked about those. Meeting, conference, training expenses, $1,000. You've almost reached that this year. Bank service charges. Why do we have a bank service charge?
That, I believe, is an account we have set up.
I think the account, I believe that, I'll check with budget finance, but I believe the account that liquid fuels are in, and it was, it was two separate accounts, and when we just transferred over, there's a bank fee associated with it.
Okay, because it's a separate account.
When we get the interest back on it, it's kind of a wash, but for whatever reason, it's, there's fees associated.
Then with construction, zero, we talked about that. Machinery equipment above 5,000, no expense there. Okay, anything else on that? Liquid fuels, okay. Road and bridge, Act 44, Fund 201.
Act 44 is a bridge account, but we get one allocation per year, somewhere in the neighborhood of the 135 number from PennDOT.
Okay. And your carry forward is greatly reduced because of that?
Well, we have one project currently associated with it, and they haven't sent all the billing in yet, but they will it by the end of the year.
Okay. And our expenses, management consulting, you have nothing requested for next year due to use of 59913, which is the next line item. And you've gone from 500, 19,000, 227, down to 202. Project cost came in less than expected, correct?
Correct.
Questions?
That was something we didn't realize, you know, obviously, the time we prepared the numbers, so it's just a balance carrying forward.
So, that would have to be a budget amendment also, correct?
Correct. Both in the expense, the revenue side, the carry forward, and on the general construction, that, that figure is translated under General Construction, 59913.
Okay. Go to the budget book, and revenue, those two items that we mentioned. Spent side, you talked about the management consulting fee going to zero, and general construction, you have a 175, but it's really 202, correct?
Correct.
Questions regarding Act 44, bridges?
Yeah. You say you get 135,000 a year? How much you get from PennDOT every year, road bridges?
135?
135. And how many bridges do you have? How many bridges do you have? How many bridges do you have?
Well, usually, you're just enough to do one.
I know, but how many do you have in the county?
Total right now?
Yeah.
301?
So, you get $135,000 a year, and you got that many bridges. I mean, that's, that's something that needs to be brought to the attention of every state rep and every state senator in this county, time and time again. Even if you got to write them every month, I got 100 or 300 bridges, and I get $135,000 a year. You know, that just says how well you're being taken care of by those people that represent you in Harrisburg. And that's, that's, that's something that I would like the solicitor to get on to. That is, that is, that is painfully obvious that they're not taken care of, the people of this county, when it comes to providing funds for bridge repairs. You got all these deficient bridges that have accumulated over the years, and you got 135,000.
There are three funds.
We have two other bridge accounts.
Okay, but still, that's what they're giving.
You're right. No, I don't agree with you.
Yeah, you agree with me, you're right, yeah. Okay, you agree with me, good. Let's do something about it. Election's over, let's do something about it. Time for talking's over with. Now it's action.
Let's move on to Fund 202.
202 is a...
Eight systems of road and bridges.
Is a PennDOT reimbursable project. It's, it's sensitive to the project. It's currently being funded through the, the NPO and the TIP, and the only project that will be going out next year through that process is the Chase Road reconstruction, which is under contract. Notice to proceed was issued in November, beginning of November. Notice to proceed was issued in November, beginning of November, and they will finish the road sometime by end of June, I believe. That American Asso got that job, but it's all, this budget is case-sensitive to that project. So whatever PennDOT funds, whatever project came in, that's what PennDOT will fund.
It's a pass-through account. Goes in and out.
So you've got Chase Road. We've heard about Chase Road for many years.
This is it, it's under contract, it's ready to go.
Is K-Rap line? Larry, is that K-Rap line? K-Rap line?
No, that's Fund 202, Aid Systems, Road and Bridges.
It was on the tip.
So you're finally going to get a solution, hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think we have to talk anymore about 202, we know exactly what...
No, the PennDOT number is the state reimbursement. The Department of Transportation is the federal reimbursement, and the total is what'll be spent through design and construction.
Going to Fund 205, Act 13, Bridge Fund.
This is a bridge fund that's specific to structurally deficient bridges. We get one allocation per year of roughly $450,000, depending. It's subject to the gas industry. Currently, right now, we have...
Second about two of them.
Five bridges currently slated for that money, three of which have, we had the GP 11 permits for. The other two have already been submitted, and all will be either out for bid, three of which will be out for bid this year, the other two will be out for bid beginning of next, and it should all be under construction by the end of 2019. So I'm carrying over as much as I can to take care of them. One is a full-out replacement, and the others are superstructure replacements. The issue with Act 13, Bridge Money 205, is that the bridge has to be brought up to above a rating of a six on any one of the major components of the bridge. Substructure, superstructure, or deck, overall rating. So you can't say, you can't do rehabs with it that will not increase that number up to only four or five. You say, oh, it's posted for 10 tons. At the end of the day, 10 tons is usable for a car vehicle. While we rehab it, maybe it's only good for 20 tons. But if the structural deficiency rating is still below a six, we can't use Act 13 money for it. And the reason we've piled it up for years is to get a bunch of bridges that fit our criteria for, to meet the structural deficient rating, and then we have to submit it to PennDOT, and they have to put on the tip. We have one currently on the tip, and beginning in January, we have the other four on the tip. We will spend all that money as governed by PennDOT for that one.
So what you're saying is it's going to be five bridges that are going to be in construction between the end of this year and the next year.
One of the, two of them are the trust bridges that were originally slated for rehab. Another one is in, on Blightburn Road in Rice Township. We have a bridge at Hollow Road in Cunningham Township, Walp Road in Sugarloaf, and Mill Mountain Road, the ones we've had hit at least three times since I've been here in Butler Township where the race track is. That's all going to be replaced.
And they're all funded through the Act 13?
Sorry?
They're all funded through Act 13.
All funded through Act 13.
And are there, did you mention all five? Because I only counted four.
I'm sorry, I missed one?
I heard Blightburn, I heard...
Two trust bridges.
Blightburn Road, Hollow Road, Bridge Road is a trust replacement.
Bridge Road, that's Bingo.
Walp Road, yeah, Bridge Road is a full-out replacement.
Bridge Road, okay. So they're going to be, just so I understand you. You said by the end of 2019, they'll be put out to forbid then?
Are they out for bid now? I thought you said some of them are out for bid now.
Some, three of them which will be bid by the end of the year. The other two will be bid beginning of next year. They usually don't like to bid them out before they get the permit in.
I understand.
And it's been exactly, you're going to say, six months that DEP sends us the permit approval.
Okay.
So I've been waiting on that, but the designs are all ready to go, we're just waiting on the permit.
So we expect construction to start in 2019?
Well, one of them, it'll be actually, he wanted, he could have done it this year, but the rain put him back. But he was allowed to do it, the Blightburn Road one, up until May 21st of next year. That's only a superstructure replacement. He'll finish that, and construction will be done. The other two that we're going to go out, bid out this year will be constructed by the end of next year. Their two will go out, it should be, it should, if we get a good season next year, it'll all be done by the end of the year.
So we expect construction?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's Act 13 money?
Mm-hmm. Been saving it for four years, I'm going to spend it...
But you said one of them was hit a few times by cars? You said one of them was hit a few times?
Yes, Mill Mountain Road one was hit, and they actually twisted the trust member.
We know who hit it?
No, nobody got any information. It was a big truck that went the wrong way. Neither Butler Township nor anybody else in the area seemed to get a license plate off of it.
No police, nothing reported or anything like that, nothing?
Well, we ended up having to close the bridge for a while, and then we had to get it inspected by our local bridge inspection unit, Panoni. They checked it out, and they recommended a couple items in order to save it until, if it got hit again, most likely it would have to open it all until we can get it replaced. So we ended up putting a crossbar on it that only cars could drive underneath it, and we narrowed down the lane width so that we could get over it.
Okay. Fund 205. Talked about that, correct? 207?
207 is another bridge fund, which we actually get two allocations per year, June and December. There's no restriction on it, doesn't have to be any structural deficient, just has to be a repair. That's where, if we do get it, the $5 vehicle fee will be placed under expenditures, and we estimate at this point for next year about $2 million with the fee application and then PennDOT's match.
PennDOT's match.
Yeah. Until I actually, we get final guarantee that's in, I haven't developed any structures to be added to that list, but beginning of next year, I plan on, once we find out. I think at least $2 million will get us maybe two full replacements or four small COVID projects, so. I have a list of them, just a matter of which ones are jumped to higher priority.
And you see, your carryforward, there's a change in that?
Yeah, we need to carry over $126,000. We only have...
Which is different from what's in the budget book.
Right. And again, that's due to billings that were delayed that we anticipated incurring this year that will not be invoiced and paid until 2019.
Okay. So you're waiting, basically, to find out exactly how much funding you have in order to...
Yeah, when the project comes in, I mean, make me part of allocation, I haven't gotten a part of it in the checkbook, and then I say, okay, this project's cost is $310,000, I have X amount left. Sometimes I don't know that to the end of the year, and I get no prior to the budget submission.
Okay. Where are we here, 207? Just talked about, right?
Yep.
208, Energy Savings Fund.
That's the report we did about two weeks ago, when McClure came in in October. That's the bond that council approved, that we, we are now almost completely done with the McClure project other than a few punchless items.
Correct.
And then the other projects will be utilized from there.
And McClure's going to come back and give us a wrap-up, right?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Rosa-Grants. Fund 220.
Before the gentleman leaves, I'll make sure that I thank those eight people. That's a great job for how many miles, there's only eight people doing that, maintaining them roads.
If anybody knows any equipment operators, we're looking.
Greatly under manned and underpaid also.
Mr. Rosa-Grants?
Yes, sir.
I shouldn't take you long on this one. Actually, fund balance to be used and accounted for to be closed in 2019. You have $1,550 left.
Yes, that was the original 911 construction fund from a long time ago, many years ago.
I don't know what you're going to construct with $1,500.
I'll find somewhere to spend it.
Okay. Fund 260. State reimbursement?
Yes. This is our large account. This is our main revenue source for 911 operations. Again, we're looking at proposed revenues of $6,754,500 in 2019.
Okay.
The, on the summary sheet, the cash balance carryforward, you see, I touched on it earlier. That funding reserve has been depleted significantly over the years with covering expenses for 911 operations. Although it seems like a windfall or a carryover that is actually unencumbered expenses for unfilled positions for 911.
And hopefully now you have your positions all filled, so that'll window down that fund?
Yes, hopefully. We're going to be having a class of 12 starting in December, and hopefully that'll be the last class for a while.
Okay.
If you recall, back in 2014, when I first took over, we actually had 24 vacancies, I believe, so that was...
Yeah, it was a large number.
Big number and a lot of overtime and burnout.
You look at the one-page summary, all the information is there. And in the narrative, you've provided information in regard to what you've done there.
Yes, the common theme on this summary page, unless you want to go into detail on every line item, we've pretty much reduced every line item in that. Again, that's tightening up our belt and getting in line with what our revenues are and staying within that budget without those reserve funds available. Now you're starting to see what the actual annual operating costs are at or near full complement.
Questions for Mr. Rosa-Grants in that regard? All state reimbursement money, right?
It's all directly tied to the 911 rewrite Act 12 of 2015. That increased the revenue for 911 in 2015 by about $2 million. So that was a direct net gain or reduction on the general fund side of about $2 million for operational expenses. And we've been able to carry that forward year after year. Looking at it on a total cost of operating 911, you're looking at about an 80/20 split. So 80% 911 funding, 20% general fund side for shared costs on personnel and operational costs.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Rosa-Grants?
Just one, you see the state redoing that act again and raising the fee?
Next year, I'm on the subcommittee. It was discussed to keep it at the current funding formula for 2019. Hopefully in 2020, they'll look at more of a population-based and call-volume based, which we should far out well and receive an increase. But that's not on the roadmap for 2019. They're going to keep the funding formula the same, so we should be right at about what our revenues are, 6.2 to 6.3, with about $150,000 in grant funding that we're anticipating to offset our expenses. So about 6.4 total. So that's right about where we've been since 2015. One thing that the act did was stabilize our funding. It used to be where it was split between three different funds, if you recall, and we'd have to put in for certain funding under the wireless program, wireline. Now it's one pot of money. The state brings in about $315,000 to $318 million a year, and that's distributed out to the counties quarterly. So right now, we're at about 76% on our revenue intake for 2018.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Fund 350, which is the Wyoming Valley Airport. On your one-page summary sheet, PennDOT has reduced their match from $89,600 down to $20,000. Department of Transportation has gone from $742,500 down to $360,000.
This revenues is based on the project-specific. We get all our money from state and federal for the project. We did, currently did the runway project reconstruction, which was done last year, year four. This year, only thing we can afford to do is the crack ceiling of the taxiways, which is the allocation you see there, that number.
Spent side, you have a couple changes from what was published. Other contractual down from $350,000, $350,000 down to $206,300. And that's because it's been moved from $550,45. Engineering architectural from $375,000 down to $161,600. Federal state project funding decreased.
Yeah. The engineering architectural fee is based on, again, the project size. The top and the bottom item go hand-to-hand. They don't really reimburse us for building and maintenance, at least the feds don't. So we put everything under where we'll use it, which is the contractual, other contractual services item.
Repair and maintenance buildings from $100,000 down to $5,000. And that's because the account is ineligible for reimbursement. Correct?
Correct.
Correct. Questions in that regard?
Do you ever meet with Mr. Scribola? Over here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you ever meet?
Looking around, I didn't see him.
Do you ever meet with the Scriboles?
Yeah.
You do? They're willing to meet with you again. They said they want to chip in some money for some of the funding.
We're going to wait on a, before we enter negotiations or discuss with the Scriboles, I think it's a good opportunity. We've asked for an audit from the Controller's Department to review the last couple of years from the Wyoming Valley Airport. That contract has been up since 2010, I believe, with...
With them as the...
With them as the FBO. There is a contract in place that's current with regard to the lease, they leased the hangar space. According to the Controller, we'll have that audit by the end of this month, November. So once I review that audit, we'll make a determination as to whether we're going to sit down and kind of figure out where the money comes in. I'm concerned there's a fuel pump that we should be looking at as well over there. Obviously, they pay, we get a portion of their, of their costs, like 10 cents on the dollar there. That may be something we can look at before making those changes. But I want to see where we're at financially before we can go forward. And I just actually did talk to the Scriboles when the Vice President visited. They were, you know, very nice.
If the fuel pump kicks, we don't suffer, they do. You'll have to go to Avoca to get refueled, so they're going to... It's one of the items that's behind the list, and the state said they would help us with it as far as reimbursement goes, but the match, we would have to get from either them or from our own revenue source at the airport, but it takes time. That pump might not last another winter season, to say the least. It did stop functioning last year at some point, and we got it to go back up. We were down for a good couple of weeks, somewhere around that.
Couple of weeks.
Yeah. So we got a lot of phone calls, where's the pump getting fixed? And we ended up getting it working again, but it's not. And we did put it out for bid to get a replacement on it, but there's just not enough money left in the revenue source at the airport. And it's just too long a process for the state to reimburse us. It'll stop functioning prior to that. So we're going to have to go to somebody for some money to replace the pump, at least to keep the airport still functioning.
If I could, Mr. Chair, from my days on the advisory board there, I remember that fuel pump not only would that drive usage of the airport, but it'd also be a moneymaker because they charge a surcharge on the fuel.
Yeah, a couple of gallons.
Ten seconds ago.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a little bit, but it's going to build up the facility as well as generate a little bit of money.
Okay, thank you. Fund 460, hazmat. No real changes in your budget according to your one-page summary?
Correct.
Looking at the budget book. Under revenue, you're looking at management fees, maybe an increase of about $9,000?
It fluctuates every year. We lose facilities, we add facilities, they add chemicals, they delete chemicals, but pretty much it stays around that $60,000 mark or more.
Okay. Emergency Management Agency, a slight decrease there?
It did, that's a grant fund. They use a formula, so it changes every year.
Okay. Carryforward is shrinking?
It is. We just recently purchased a utility truck for $69,000, and then we spent some... other money throughout the account just increasing our hazmat response.
Okay. Interest income looks like you're up a little bit. Expense reimbursement, same number as last year, almost $50,000.
Right. That's for our mast notification system, so we pay it out front, and then we get reimbursed 100% through the central task force, through Homeland Security Grant.
Good. Looking at the expense side, decrease the office supplies, $10,000 down to $2500?
That's something that we just spent for our Act 165 coordinator, so that should more than cover him.
Okay. Materials supply requisition has decreased from $50,000 down to $12,500?
Unfortunately, we had a lot of repairs to our building, which we could do a cost share with, so we moved some of the money more into that account. We thought it'd be more beneficial there.
Yeah, they'll pay for part of it. That's great. Parts decreased from $20,000 down to $5,000. Small tools, gone from $115,000 to $31,000?
Correct, same reason.
Same reason?
Yeah.
Postage, you have a, I am there, $500 because you could charge that against your reimbursement?
Yes.
Other contractual services, at almost $50,000 figure. Management and consulting services, $35,000.
We're doing a joint exercise with the Department of Environmental Protection and the Department of Health, so we need to pay for some expenses upfront, like a commodity flow study, and then we'll get reimbursed. It's an 80/20 match grant.
Great. Freight, express, telephone, internet, that's a significant reduction, down to $650 from $10,000?
With the VoIP system now, we had a cost share, like a savings, and that would just cover the Act 165 coordinator, the cell phone for them.
Okay. Freight and express charges from $5,500. Travel expenses, $11,500 down to $500?
Again, a lot of that is under the conference training and meeting fees. We really don't, a lot is covered by grants, or the state covers a lot, so that's really just to cover anything that wouldn't be covered with other accounts.
Okay. Repairs and maintenance of buildings, you went from $30,000 to $162,000.
Right. Even with the paint, the tile, the carpeting, we were able to do a one-third cost share with them, with the county, so we felt it was more important with the age of the building to put the money there. Seems like more things are breaking.
Repairs and maintenance of vehicles from $75,000 down to $20,000?
Right. That would only cover the hazmat vehicles, so that would more than cover what we would need.
Managed print services, you're reimbursing the county $1,000?
Which one is that? I'm sorry.
Managed print services?
Oh, yes. That's just to cover the Act 165 coordinator.
Dues of memberships, $1,000. Looks like that's about the number you're going to be there. Meeting, conference, training fees, $10,000. That's because there's other grants and state training?
Right. That would cover any conferences for our local emergency planning committee group, and that more than will cover it, the $10,000.
Bank service charges, $500 bucks?
We have a CD, so we get charged some fees with that.
Okay. Transfers, $24,535.
That's to reimburse the general fund for half the salary and benefits for Act 165 coordinator.
Machinery equipment above $5,000, you have $25,000 in there?
That, we just got that new hazmat response vehicle, so that would cover any tools or any equipment we want to put on it, or anything that comes up during the year that we could cost share.
Good. Okay, going right over to Fund 470, radiation emergency response.
That's a grant that comes in and goes right out. We do give $1,500 to each municipality within the 10-mile radius, so they could improve their radiation program, and to monitoring decon stations within the county. The rest we spend on ourself here, our radiation program, and we also take care of the amateur radio group. Not this past tornado, the one in Pitts and Township in Bear Creek. All of our radio communication went out, and they were able to still communicate via amateur radio. So they're very important to us. And I'd just like to really quickly note that we just had our federally evaluated drill, and the whole county, there was no findings without, throughout the whole county.
Very good.
For the nuclear power plant.
Very good. Okay. Solid waste. You've been sitting in the back there for quite a while there.
Could the entire department please come up, please?
Beth DeNardi, Luzerne County Recycling Coordinator, in charge of the solid waste management department.
You have a lot to manage there, huh?
Well, it's a tough job, but somebody has to do it, right?
Okay. Looks like you're about the same numbers as last year.
Pretty much, pretty much. From what I can tell you, on most of the line items, advertising in particular, we have offered assistance with a special collection for the municipalities, not only with paper shredding, but also with electronics. We haven't received all of the invoices in yet. That number will come up. We will also be doing a telephone book recycling and add magazines to it this year. That will also come out of our advertising. Quite possibly the only change that we really have, that is the 10% in $10,000, is the expense in management and consulting services. We have two more years before we have to update the 10-year municipal solid waste plan. That's the plan that supports the office. We have figured a price in. Generally, it'll be ranging over a two-year period. We have just recently confirmed that we will be working with a particular consultant, and we will start into it next year. We will have meetings, and we'll have a SWAC committee. We already have our members. It's just a matter of getting together with the consultant and deciding when we want to have our meetings.
And that's required by?
State.
By the state?
Yes.
In order to get your reimbursement?
No. The 10-year plan, the 10-year municipal solid waste plan, deals with municipal solid waste, garbage. Every county is required by the state to have a 10-year plan. What we will go for with the plan is financial support for the solid waste management department and/or recycling office. We use the money that we receive from the 10-year plan to support the office in all aspects of recycling, which includes the tire collections and the electronics collections that the towns are now currently doing, as well as the paper shredding.
Questions for Mr. DeNardi?
That represents about three quarters of our budget for that, that project next year, just as a side note. So we anticipate incurring about three quarters of the expenses.
Good. Well, you do a lot of great services. I think the municipalities particularly allow them to do those big days where they recycle so many different items. That's, otherwise you'd probably end up in roadside green piles or whatever.
Well, the good news is every year that we get more and more towns that jump on board for the electronics and the paper shredding, so we'll continue with that.
That's great.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks for waiting.
A little shout-out to the water company. We donated this year.
Oh, good.
That's where it was held, right?
Yes.
City water.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
Good.
Did he charge you for the day?
Don't do anything.
Okay, we waited for buildings and grounds?
Thank you.
Bill is with us.
Bill's represented the county tonight at the chamber dinner. The county won an award for, is it Public Place?
Yes, Place of Pride.
Place of Pride for our rotunda project for 2018. That was obviously shared with the council for your support of that project. I want to thank Bill for attending on our behalf. Did you have to give a speech, Bill?
Yes, I did.
Oh, good job.
Is there a cash prize with that award?
Million dollars? We got that fancy thing that that bill has.
Okay, buildings and grounds, Fund 100. Looking at your one-page summary, you're asking for an increase for buildings, repairs and maintenance from $30,000 to $50,000?
That's correct.
How did you come up with that new figure?
Based on what we're looking at. Out of that fund comes repairs, like if the simplex system breaks down, window repair, roof repairs, roof drain repairs, sewer repairs, backflow testing, repair. Penn Place this year was $3,895 alone. Window cleaning, parking garage cleaning, and so on and so forth. That's what comes out of that fund.
What have you spent this year? Something over, just over $30,000? Is that correct?
As of Friday, we are $30,224, but I know we have several invoices that are in that haven't been paid at this point.
Okay. Looking at the budget book for buildings and grounds, you have expense reimbursement of $18,900, which is the same as last year. Correct?
Correct.
Question I have is, if you rent the courthouse or any of the facilities, where does that money revenue wise go?
I believe that is under, that may be under budget and finance. It's not, it's not a...
So it doesn't come back to the...
It's not, does not come under building grounds, even though we schedule that, but no, the income, I believe, goes to budget and finance. I'd have to defer to Mr. Swetz.
Looking at expenses, you have wages down to benefits, life insurance, those are all employee salaries and benefits, correct?
Correct.
Office supplies, $3,500, which is the same as last year. Are you going to be close to that number? It looks like you're spending a little bit over $21.
We're 85%.
85?
As of today.
Material and supplies, you have 35 in. It looks like you're over your budget of $30,000 this year?
That's correct.
Correct?
We did have to do a budget transfer.
Vehicle fuel, the gas, talked about that several times, small tools and minor equipment. You asked for $13,500. Where are you at this point?
56%?
56%, a little bit more than half. Postage, that's been consolidated. Other contractual services, nothing in there. Telephone, internet, significant drop from $3,000 down to $425. Advertising, $200. Electricity, $400,000. That based on actual?
Well, this is based on last year's and in line with what we've mentioned. Another electricity budget numbers that we're using is that we haven't really realized what the savings are going to be.
Okay.
So we will have a good, clear picture at this time next year.
Same for gas?
Mr. Chair, didn't we renegotiate with UGI? Thought we had...
We got a contract with UGI for gas.
Yeah, but I thought it was significant savings, wasn't it?
I don't think it was significant.
It was, it was, it was a fixed savings over some of the bills that we had experienced under the variable rate, because we got hit pretty hard last year during the cold months.
Yes.
So to say that, I would like to think that it would be an overall savings, but it's a little bit difficult because we went from a variable rate to a fixed rate, and we locked in on that rate. So it's, that rate was actually higher than some of the low-demand rates in the summertime.
So balance.
Overall, I think it was a wise decision, don't get me wrong. But again, it's going to be difficult to really compare of being under a variable rate to a fixed rate.
It locks in a rate for you, so you know what the budget.
Correct. It was easier for budget purposes. And again, I think, I think there will be a net savings, but it's just difficult for us to put a number on that at this point.
I think, I mean, if we're mostly using gas for heating, I'm guessing electricity is probably a little more predictable through the year. I mean, the majority of our heat comes from gas, I'm thinking, Mr. O'Neill?
Ah, yes. That's correct.
How are we doing currently? Apple store oranges, it's a variable rate this year, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, gas, same number as last year. Sewer, the same number. Water, same number. You feel those are all?
The sewer bills are tied to the water bills, so that's always going to be a direct correlation there.
Repairs and maintenance of buildings, we talked about that. Pest control, $4,500, same as last year. Repairs, maintenance, machinery, equipment, $125,000. We had looked like you spent about $94 at one point. Are you higher now?
We're at 77%. We're about $97,000.
Repairs, maintenance miscellaneous, $5,000. You had spent about $3,000 as of when the book was published. Lease and machinery equipment, you had $6,500, which is a reduction from $8,500. Seems to be in line with what you're spending. Insurance autos out, meeting and conference trains out. Machine equipment above $5,000, you have $25,000 in there instead of $30. Got a deal with that number?
Yes. Last, last year, we, that was specifically for the HVAC units that we put over at the 44th Annex, so that was specifically identified. This year, we're looking at some smaller HVAC projects, perhaps in the courtrooms here in the courthouse, and also using, installing a sump system in the basement, sub-basement.
Okay. Questions for buildings and grounds?
Yeah, I do. It's not directly related to these numbers. Do you know, sir, does building and grounds store any historical artifacts that belongs to the county that had at one time been used on the grounds of the county or anywhere in the courthouse?
Only thing I know is we make sure we retain any types of hardware, like doors and locking mechanisms. I do know we have some of those. Other than that, I don't know of any other artifacts. I can ask my staff.
Okay. I would appreciate it if you can. From time to time, I get questions. Whatever happened to this and whatever happened to that? And I remember that was over there, and now no one seems to know where it is.
Where's Mrs. Palmer?
Yes, good question.
Mrs. Palmer is at Baut Studios in Swersville.
She is.
I was, I was actually there. I met a preservationist there, probably back in early summertime, who had called inquiring about that. So I set up a meeting, and that was my first introduction to the statue. It's being stored over there. Apparently, it was sent over there to be preserved, but the costs to do that are really well beyond. They just don't feel that it would be worthwhile, based on the value of the piece. I think it was taken over there, and it was, it was looked at, and apparently, many years ago when it went over, and I don't recall the dates now, I did know them shortly after being there. But, you know, they took it over there with the hope of having it preserved, and when they got an estimate from Baut Studios, they just basically left it there. That's what I was told. And at this point, I did see, I did see the statue, but the owners at Baut Studios just don't feel that it would be, it's just, there's just too much that needs to be done to bring it back at this point.
Did you actually view the statue?
Yeah, I did. I have some pictures.
Great. Love to see them. I'm just wondering what...
I can, I should have those.
I mean, if, if the county owns the statue...
The county does technically own the statue. I don't know if there's any, I don't believe it's significant. There may have been a small fee that is due to Baut if they wanted it returned because they had picked it up and taken it over. They did some preliminary work, just looking it over and testing it. I don't recall him giving me a number at that time, but we weren't really there to get it back that day. We were there to have the historian look at it, so. But I can, I can gladly, I can send pictures and have them sent over to council. I did get a few.
That'd be marvelous. It just seems such a shame to leave a historical artifact in, you know, virtually give it away, you know, just to another...
Well, there was some damage done to the statue, not to mention that the years have not been kind as far as just normal weathering, and with the combination of what would be needed to bring it back, it would, it really would be cut. And both parties agree, that was not my opinion, because I'm certainly not qualified to make that determination, but that was the consensus between Mr. Baut and, and the gentleman who came from the society.
Anyone else? Thank you. Public comment? Mr. Newman wants to do public, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. He's waiting patiently. He's waiting patiently.
I do, I was trying to keep it over. I would like to address, comment on the Sheriff Department budget proposal. I notice he is asking for an increase of, or two, one hundred and ten thousand dollars for overtime, and he is asking for two additional employees, which Mr. Pedry has said he will give them if the funds are available. Well, the two additional employees, and I assume that the costs are productive costs of fifty thousand dollars per employee, that would include benefits, payroll costs, social security, Medicare, unemployment compensation, workman's compensation contributions, healthcare cost, pension, holiday, leave, and any insurances that are applicable. One hundred thousand dollars was quoted for the two employees. Now, there's not much difference between a hundred and ten thousand dollars for overtime and a hundred thousand dollars for two additional employees, but by paying the overtime, you avoid the payroll costs. And I think this county needs to avoid healthcare costs and pension costs any way possible. Overtime is not a bad word. Some people get excited when they hear overtime. Look what you save by paying overtime. Now, and I could almost assure you that those two additional employees will increase the amount of overtime that you'll be paying. Anytime you put more employees on, you get more overtime. Your costs go up. Now, what's the benchmark? How do you make the decision? You look at the factor, your overtime factor, and pretty much accepted in other government agencies and on the private side, is a factor of five percent. Your total overtime work hours compared to your total work hours. If it's over five percent, you need to look at your staffing. If it's under five percent, you're in good shape, avoid payroll costs, and pay the overtime. That's a decision somebody has to make. I'm suggesting that you do that and make this, and make a determination based on that. There's also training costs, and the sheriff, as I understand, addressed that. Getting Act One twenty people to work as deputies might be a problem, and you're probably going to take new employees, so you will have training costs. So I throw that out for you. Also, in the, in the discussion tonight, I didn't hear the word safety mentioned, safety. Is anybody looking at your motor vehicle accident rate, your industrial accident rate, and your lost workday injury rate, and what it's costing you? Is anybody looking at that? You should, because there's a wealth of savings by reducing your accidents.
Mr. Newman, I think that's addressed to the insurance side. The safety committee looks at those things.
Okay, my three minutes are up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Come on, just a, just a comment.
Anyone else in the audience? Hearing none?
Mr. Chair, just one comment.
Excuse me?
Just one comment.
Sure.
The manager at the start of the budget hearing said that this budget would include no new employees, no new employees. So I think it's disingenuous for him to say no new employees, and for his department heads to come in and say they need new people. It's all on their side.
I'll be going by whatever.
Just so everybody's reminded, our next meeting is Monday evening. Again, we'll have two presentations, as we had most of the evening, before tonight, but after the first presentation, we will have a public hearing here at the courthouse. So the first presentation is scheduled for 5:00 PM, and public hearing probably in the area of 5:30, quarter to six, and then we'll have the second presentation. With a motion to adjourn?
So will we.
Segment. Second, Mr. Haas, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.